Good evening, everybody. Come on. Welcome to tonight's Muskogee Municipal Authority, October 28th, 2024. I guess we'll have our invocation get started. Mr. Abell.
Dear God, guide us with wisdom and compassion as we serve our community tonight. May our decisions reflect justice, unity, and the common good of all. Amen.
Amen. Flag salute. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we'll do the State of Oklahoma pledge. I salute the flag of the State of Oklahoma. It sends us peace and unite all people. Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hoos. Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Item number one, please.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of September 23rd, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Move for approval. Set it up.
Have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item number two, please.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending September 30th, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Chair, members of the board, this month's claims are included in your packet. Staff recommends approval. We stand ready for questions.
I move for approval.
Second. Make motion. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number three.
Consider approval of the acceptance of ODEQ consent order number 24-190, and if approved, authorize the execution at the same time, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, Mayor and authority members, we issued a consent order, case number 15-011 back around 2015. And this was after multiple bypasses around the community, and we reported them as we should. They put us under consent order, and they gave us a task list to fix. There were many items on that task. We used the $45 million in OWRB money that we borrowed, 27 of it being in the Clean Water State Revolving Fund side, to correct almost all of those tasks. We are down to one remaining task. I put the consent order and the letter that was written to us in your packet. That letter basically says they're going to stop the consent order number 15-011 and continue it into number 24-190 with the item that was left remaining in the original consent order. And that's basically to correct the lift station 16, which is bypassing still. It's bypassed four times since this last issue. But it's on the corner of Harris Road and Highway 16. This item is also, by the way, on your agenda as item number 23, to hire Greg Armstrong from HUB to design it and correct this problem. Avery Rigley in our office also coordinated with ODEQ and came up with a plan, a schedule that would work that is listed in this consent order. And it's 11/1 of '24 to have a report into ODEQ to state what we're going to do, which we already have done, by the way. By February of '25, we'll have plans ready to go. And by 6/1 of '25, we'll start construction on the lift station to rehabilitate it. And we should be completed and in compliance by 8/1 of '26. So this is to accept the consent order and issue the authorization to the mayor to sign it. That's what we're asking for, and I'll answer any questions.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. This meeting is now adjourned. We will now call to order the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hoos. Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Item number one, please.
Consider approval of minutes of September 23rd, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number two, please.
Consider approval of Muskogee Redevelopment Authority claims for September 14th, 2024, through October 18th, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Chair, members of the Authority, this month's claims are included in your packet. Our staff recommends approval, and I'm ready to answer any questions you may have.
I move for approval.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. This meeting is now adjourned. This is the Muskogee City Council meeting, October 28th, 2024. We... Okay, we'll now call to order this meeting. Roll call.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hoos. Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Make a motion. Will you excuse Dr. Hoos?
Second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Thank you, Jamie. Motion passes. Okay. Approval of minutes. City Council Special Call, September 9th, 2024, and regular session, September 23rd, 2024. Move for approval. Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Now to the regular agenda. Item number one.
Acknowledge Veterans' Day and those who have served and protected our country, and take other necessary action.
Counselor Melody Cranford, please.
Yes, November 11th will be Veterans' Day. And we are one of only about eight cities in the state of Oklahoma that are recognized as Purple Heart Cities. So we wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you to our veterans for their service. Those that live in the city of Muskogee, we want you to know that we honor you, especially those of the Military Order of Purple Heart, Chapter 617, here in the city of Muskogee. So we just wanted to take this opportunity, because we will not meet again before Veterans' Day, to say thank you publicly for your service.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Item number two, please.
Consider approval of claims for all city departments, August 31st, 2024, through October 18th, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Mayor, members of the council, the claims list is included in your packet. Staff recommends approval, and I'm ready to answer any questions you may have.
I move for approval.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Roll call. Item number three is stricken. It's been stricken from the agenda tonight. Item number four, please.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4242A, amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, Chapter 74, Taxation, Article 5, Hotel Motel Tax, amending Section 74-122, Delinquent Taxes and Interest, adding repugler severability codification, and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. And tonight, I'm having our newest attorney, who just passed the barn, got sworn in, Seth Campbell, present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Our current hotel motel tax ordinance does not provide for any enforcement mechanism beyond a penalty structure. This proposed amendment to this ordinance aims to establish a clear procedure for the city to address hotels that fail to remit the taxes that they have previously collected from their customers. The amendment allows the city to place a lien on a hotel that has failed to remit their taxes. It would also provide authority to temporarily suspend essential services, such as water and waste collection, as a means to ensure compliance with our ordinances. The local hotel motel tax owner association has agreed with this amendment, as well as the tourism authority. Staff recommends approval, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Move for approval.
Second.
Do we have very many hotel motels that's not paying us taxes, or is it just like one or two?
I believe it's just a few, but we will be discussing that further in executive session.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
No.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item number five, please.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 3013, amending Appendix A of the Muskogee City Code pertaining to hotel motel delinquent tax fee, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm going to have Mr. Campbell present this item. It's in correlation with item number four that we just had.
This item simply removes the amount of the penalty, which is already existing in our current ordinances. It's $250 for non-payment. It puts it in Appendix A in order to make our ordinances in conformity with the rest of the ordinances. We recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
No.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number six, please.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 3014, declaring items of personal property presently in the possession of the City of Muskogee to be surplus to the needs of the City of Muskogee, and authorize the city manager or his designee to offer for sale or dispose of the same, all as per the attached list, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Coleman.
Mayor, members of the council, this item pertains to some surplus items that we have at the airport on October 16th. The airport board recommended approval for the city council regarding these items. And they are essentially light bulbs that used to be light runway lights. They are no longer functional for the city of Muskogee, and we would like to donate those to another municipal airport.
I move for approval. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item number seven.
Receive a report from the council-appointed Homeless Task Force Subcommittee and take other necessary action.
Counselor Shirley Hilton Flannery and Melody Cranford.
Melody, take over.
Thank you. Tonight, we are bringing back information about the subcommittee that was formed with the two of us as council members. We have met, we have selected through city organizations, three members to form a committee that will work with us. Those members are Evelyn Hibbs from Wish, because she works directly. Her work is impacted by the homeless community. Kathy Sebel, of course, we know the library is impacted by the homeless community. And Katie Marshall from Green Country, because they already have some initiatives in place that are helping us to get people that are being, some people dropped off into our community, back through their project, reconnect to their homes. So these three women have agreed to be a part of our committee. Ren Stratten is an honorary ex-officio member. We plan to host an invitation-only discussion panel at the Martin Luther King Center on November 12th, from 6:00 to 7:00. The community will be invited. Prior to that meeting, our committee will have its first official meeting with these members once this is taken care of tonight. Any questions? Comments?
Fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we've got some citizens signed up to speak. We'll give them five minutes each. Mr. Ivory Van.
Good evening.
If you could state your name for the record.
Ivory Van, former city councilor. If I could, Mayor, could I let the representatives go before me that came up here with my ex constituents that's in Ward 3?
I can let two of these go before you.
Okay.
John Carson, please. Just state your name, and that's it.
Okay, my name is John Carson. And I'm just here to talk about the homeless problems as well. I have several properties in town that broke into quite a bit, people on the bicycles running by. Outside, you see them going through the neighbors' porches when they're asleep, or if they're not at home. I have property here that gets vandalized. People are making porta potties, putting them wherever they want, putting on other people's property, tearing up the property, vandalizing fences, noise, yelling, all night, daytime. So I just want to let that be known.
What area?
Around Spalding Park. That's all I have? Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Floyd. Mr. Floyd Jones. State your name.
Sir, my name's Floyd Jones. I live at 602 Spalding Boulevard. And we've had a problem with a girl that lives on, it's private property. It's her brother-in-law's, but there's no shelter. And like he said, she's using the bathroom in a bucket and burning it of a night when everyone's asleep. And I go out on the front porch, and I can't stand it, you know? And I get, she wakes me up all hours of the night, because she beats loud. And you don't know if she's beating on your vehicle or not, or what she's beating on, and just cussing and hollering. And I grow a garden in the summertime, and with my grandkids' help. And my grandkids are scared to go out in my backyard for all the yelling and profanity and things that's going on. It's really bad. It's a nuisance to our neighborhood. You know, it's, all the neighbors is complaining, but just a few of us come up here, and I've called the police on her and filled out a, started a piece on a paper on her. And she, they said I'd hear something back in the mail, and I never heard nothing back. And they're telling me that it's code enforcement, that it's not their problem. But the stolen piece is their problem, but she's breaking the code and burning, you know, she burns every night, every other night. And this goes on for days. She's at it right now. I mean, before I come up here, she's out there hollering and cussing. It's terrible for you, when you can't take your grandkids in your backyard. But, you know, I've complained, and we really need some help.
What was your address again?
Excuse me?
602 Spalding. 602.
Yeah, I know that's at 516 Frankford Street that this is happening at.
516.
518? 518. You know, we have pictures of her. John took pictures of where she's using, he found against this building. And it's, what it is, is a trailer house toilet out of a, a travel trailer toilet shoved down in a bucket. And the bucket's cracked. I have pictures of, we have pictures of it. And we asked yesterday, Ivory come over, because I called Ivory, and Ivory asked her, three of us standing there, ask her, what are you doing with your waste? I'm burning it, it and the cats. And, you know, we're those ones that the neighbors are suffering. I mean, it's pitiful. Most of my neighbors are Mexican that don't speak English. They have to, some of my, most of us got to have their kids to trash like for, you know? And it's, it's pretty bad. It's really bad, you know? Any help we could get would really be appreciated. And that's all I really got. God bless you.
Jones, could you step up here, please? Give her a hug when you can. That's a phone number. Mr. Ivory Van.
Ivory Van again, former city councilor. I'd just like to thank y'all for listening to my ex constituents out here, and y'all's constituents now, Councilman Reed and Councilman Ms. Melody Cranford. So like I said, I've been over there. This problem began with a bread truck. She had a bread truck she lived in. She busted all the windows out of the bread truck. Okay, we got that problem solved. Now, like I said, went over there yesterday, she's got that, like he explained, I'm not going to repeat him. Got this toilet and everything and waste. I went and talked to the fire chief this morning, and he should have came to a staff meeting with this problem. And it needs to be solved. You know, nobody should live like that. You wouldn't want nobody living next to you with somebody burning, dumping in a bucket, and then boo-booing in the bucket, and then burning it at night. And you get up in the morning, you got to smell it like that. That's unsanitary. Also called DEQ this morning. So they supposed to get back with me tomorrow. So I know we can get this problem fixed. And also Officer Hammond, I believe, I was setting up a meeting with him to talk to him about this situation. Because we live in Muskogee, Oklahoma, and we want people coming here to our city. We want a clean city. We want a safe city. And these neighbors are living right there and got kids across the street, and they got to look at this woman, holler. I seen it myself, I witnessed it. She's running around with a bikini on, everything. And I asked her yesterday, I said, why are you going for a shelter? She's going to try to get a tent. That ain't going to do nothing, because she's going to freeze to death this winter. But she's got a stove, a wood stove like, but still, being out in the elements. The thing is, I know you're just forming this task force, but you need to also think about mental health issues, because this lady has mental health issues. And half our people here, homeless in Muskogee, do have mental health issues. You know, you see them, I seen them on 32nd Street, in the middle of the street, dancing like this. You know, you got a problem when you got, you in the middle of the street dancing, you know? So I hope, Shirley and Melanie, that you look into this situation very well. And we need to get these people some help, because, like I said, they definitely need help. And it's, you go out to Walmart, and you got people out there panhandling, still panhandling. And that don't make sense. I used to call, when I was on the council, every time, I'd always call Ronnie Yates, a police officer. He would always go out and check it, and we'd have them move, because it don't make no sense. You know, we got people in Muskogee doing, still doing that, just taking people's money. And then they'll go, I watched a lady one day getting out. She was out there panhandling, and she, her boyfriend was with her. She was out there holding the sign. She got in the van, and after they made enough money, they left. And then one Christmas, this was a nice older couple, this is clean, and they were out there but cheddar's. And I asked them, I said, what are y'all doing out here? They said, well, sir, we're going to be honest with you. We need to make a car payment. Perfectly healthy, older people, but they need to make a car payment. But I'm going to sit down now, but please take what the neighbors say in consideration and do something. You see something, say something. I'm like John Lewis. You see something, say something, and do something. Because when you're setting those seats up there, you got to get out and feel, and you got to look at what's going on in your community. That's just, that's just the way Ivory Van was. So I'm going to take my seat, and I thank you for y'all's time.
Thank you, Mr. Ivory. Mr. Teehee.
My name's Johnny Teehee. I just wanted to give you all an update, kind of on homelessness, and kind of a problem that's not just in Muskogee, it's all across the country. There's been several of us, department heads, and some of the others in the, in the city that have gone to different national conferences. It's the main topic everywhere we go. There's no answer to it. There's nothing that we are, there's no secret to fixing it. Mr. Van's correct. A lot of them are mental health issues, which is a lot of what we, just like the problem here. I mean, you're limited on what you can do with a mental health person. But obviously, we will work with that, and Officer Hamlin is one of our, we consider him our homeless expert. But we will get him on that as well. We have a meeting every month with our Homeless Task Force. There's not any, you know, secret to fix everything. One of the things that some of the bigger cities, they'll throw millions of dollars at it. And at the time, when all the money's gone, they still have a homeless problem. So we're more than open to any suggestions that may come up from your, from your meetings. But it will surprise me if you come up with anything we haven't already discussed and have been working on. But I just wanted, I knew it was going to be an issue tonight, so I wanted to kind of give the council an update on what we do. We meet, our code enforcement, pretty much every department within the city meets on a regular basis and discusses issues. We've cleaned up, I don't know how many different encampments, encampments, and the issue we have recently, as far as court goes, is if they don't have the money to pay fines, you can't find them. I mean, all I have to do is say, I don't have the money for it. So it's really one of those things, you kind of beat your head up against the wall on some things. And the best thing we can do is the program we have through Green Country is get the ones who want to go somewhere else to be, be with family and get them back and be reunited. And with regards to the, the people in the tents and things like that through the winter coming on, you're correct, and how they managed to not freeze to death, I don't know, but they don't. So, but we're always open to anything. My office is open if they have an issue. And like I said, James is to the point where he pretty much knows them all by, by first name, and knows how to deal with them and how, how to work with them as well. So I just wanted to give you all an update. If you had any questions or anything, my office is always available and to our public as well. But we'll get James on that tomorrow and see if we can't try to figure out something with this situation.
Did I read, or I thought I read, that the governor or something at the state level, they were going to try to address this issue to an extent?
I mean, people all across, whether it's county to county, cities, states, they all have different ways of trying to address the issue. I, like I said, I went to a conference two years ago in Dallas and listened to a bunch of...
About the sushi.
Yes, specifically that. And then went to another one in San Diego that there are always, it's a hot topic and it's something everybody talks about. But for the most part, the only explanation they have is pouring millions of dollars to it, which obviously a city like Muskogee can't. And there's no right answer. I mean, if there's something new that's come about, I haven't heard of it. We just do the best we can within our abilities within the city and get the ones back to an area where they want to go to reunite. And there's some that just, unfortunately, they just choose to be homeless. They don't have any other ambitions, I guess would be a way of putting it. The ones that come and that James knows several that he has helped, the ones who have an interest in, regardless of whether it's home, housing, jobs, whatever the case may be, we work with those folks and try to get them, whether it's through Green Country or through other services. But you have, unfortunately, you have a group of people and it's a high number out there in Muskogee as well as the state and across our country, they have no interest in anything other than just being homeless, as sad as that is.
Mr. Teehee?
Yes.
How many homeless do you think we have in our community?
We've been doing surveys and we've, with regards to just a little bit about what we do, we have the side by side and we'll go, our officers go to all of our parks, our trail system, pretty much on a daily and nightly basis. And they put those in our shift summary, so we have information about those. For the most part, we have in the neighborhood of around 20 to 30. I know it seems like a lot more because they'll just go from one area to the next when we find an encampment and take it out. The other thing that we've worked on through our committee is that we try to find out how many are those are Muskogee, as opposed to coming from Talalco or Warner or wherever the case may be. And the ones who actually, we believe we can tie to Muskogee that are homeless is less than 10.
May I address-
Yes, ma'am.
-the comments? First of all, I want to apologize personally as your councilperson for the issues that you are encountering. We have been out. We have spoken to lots of the, I call them citizens because they're here in the city of Muskogee and they deserve our respect as we try to help them. We have relocated people. I think you will be pleased with our task force committee that we have formed because we do have, on that panel, and we hope that you can attend, we have police officers, we have people from Muskogee Health Department, the ER. So we are trying to make sure that at the time that we help you, we also help the people. And so mental health is an issue and that's why we have Katie, who is a homeless expert at Green Country on this committee with us. Because we want to ensure that while we are helping you, we're helping them at the same time. We also have, to speak to the point of counting the numbers, we have after this panel, a stand down. It's kinda like a veteran stand down where, when we're trying to figure out homelessness in the veteran population. What they would do is have a veteran stand down where veterans are coming and we're getting those numbers so we can have accurate numbers, like our chief is saying, of the citizens who are out there that are homeless, that are residents of the city of Muskogee and that are not, so that we can assist those that are not with getting home. And so we are doing a lot of things that may not look like it because you're going through what you consider a nuisance. But we are on the ground, we are working, we are gaining rapport, first of all, because with mental health issues, they have to trust you before they allow you to help them. So we are on the ground and we're doing some things that you may not always be able to see. So I would like to come over and speak to the lady that's living beside you because a lot of times, they just need to know that they have a friend, that we are willing to give them a hand up while we help them and assist them. So I'll be willing to come over and do that. But just know, like Highway 69 and all these areas that are overpopulated, it seems like because that's the entryway into the city of Muskogee. We are working those areas heavily to make sure and ensure that you stay safe, first of all. And that these people who are coming in are also safe as we reunite them with their families. Because when you have mental health issues, you can't help that, right? There are some people who, as the chief said, want to be homeless and then there are others that are homeless for reasons that are unimaginable. And if this young lady is out screaming in the middle of the night, all night and doing those things, it sounds like she has a mental health issue. And I don't think she would want to have that. And I don't think that she would want to do those things in front of children so that children would feel safe or respect her, right? So let's all work together. And again, that's what this committee is all about, us all working together, coming together as citizens, experts in our fields, and making sure that the needs of everybody are met at the same time. So again, I apologize to you publicly for what you're going through. We're working on ordinances. We're doing a lot of things at the same time. It will all come together. It will all come together before this issue becomes fast in the city of Muskogee. So like the chief said, 10 to 20 people migrating from place to place, seems like a lot of people here that are homeless, but we don't have an overpopulation like you would see on the news and some of these other places. And we're grateful for that. We're trying to be proactive and get ahead of it. So that's what this committee is all about. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I'd like to say, God bless the homeless task force committee. Good luck. That's a big, it's a big challenge. Big challenge.
We're making some great strides, though. And I think that when it all comes together, you will see our little efforts are gonna impact us greatly. So please give us some grace, lean into it while we do this thing.
Fantastic. Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome, sir.
Item, item number eight, please.
Consider approval of the closeout revision for the 2021 Coronavirus Response Community Development Block Grant for a total expenditure amount of $402,510.82 or take other necessary action.
Mr. Jody King.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this item we brought to this body back in February of this year as we were preparing to do our closeout on our Coronavirus Response Community Development Block Grant for the last few years. And at the time, we were anticipating closing out at $405,000. And so simply as a cleanup measure for grant reporting, we just wanted to put on the record that the total expenditure amount for this grant is going to be $402,510.82. Staff recommends approval of the item. We'll take any questions.
Now, has this amount already been spent?
This amount was already spent, yes. We were just submitting the closeout documentation to close out the grant.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and approval? Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Hale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number nine, please.
Consider approval of lowest and best bid from Avery Lawn and Landscape for the abatement of 60 properties at a cost of .008 cents per square foot for mowing and cleanup and $2 per cubic yard for trash and debris removal or take other necessary action.
Mr. King again, please.
So this bid went out for 60 properties that we needed to be abated through our code enforcement procedures. We received four bids and we're recommending the bid from Avery Lawn and Landscape as the lowest and best bid, coming in at 0.08 dollars per square foot for mowing and a cleanup of $2 per cubic yard. We did verify with the contractor that $2 was the proper bid for their amount. We recommend approval. We'll take any questions.
Could we have Mr. Ivory Van speak at this time?
Ivory Van, I could be home right now, but I'm not. And the reason I'm not home is because I'm concerned. This bid right here, this Avery Lawn Service, I've seen his work. And when I was on the council, I watched different contractors, the jobs that they did. And I went and looked, inspected. It wasn't my responsibility, but I went out and inspected them, their work after they finished. He showed me what he done at the King Center. That was one. When you showed me who y'all the first time, trust me, I believed you. He showed me again who he was at Casey's. That was another situation. And me and Deputy Mayor, we may disagree on this, but one day he was down at the King Center and I seen how he was cutting the grass. So I went out and got his number and called him. He came back out. And I like my stuff edged and I like it looking good. And Mr. Stewart knew. I like my yards looking good. And so he didn't do it so good. So got a whole ton and he came down and he edged it. But after that, I started noticing again. And I went to the neighbors, building neighborhoods and told them about his work. So one day I was going down York Street over Casey's and you know, I see over here trash and debris? Well, I tell you what, he left more trash and debris on Casey's lawn. I wish I still had the pictures on my phone. So I took the pictures, I went inside and I got the manager. So the manager comes out, not only did he throw grass out in the street, that's another thing he done, he grassed all out in the street. So the manager came out and she called corporate. So corporate, matter of fact, just so happened, corporate was there that day and they seen his work. And y'all would have been, like I say, if you want somebody cutting your grass, you don't want this gentleman. I'm telling you. Because I'm telling you, I watched him that day and seen what he did. And if you don't believe me, call Stormwater. Because they came out, they gave him a warning. They couldn't give him a ticket, but they gave him a warning that day. So tomorrow, I hope you don't vote yes on this. If you do, something's wrong. You're not really considering what I'm saying, saying that I'm lying. And I'm not. Because what he did that day, it was despicable. And the way he left it was despicable. Grass all in the drains ditched, wasn't no water. He could weed eat it, but he didn't. He just left it like it was. And so when I seen this on that paper when I was Sunday, I said, you gotta be kidding me. I just can't hold my peace. I got to come up here and say something about this. Because it's not right. And you expect him to clean people's yard up that's way behind anyway for his grass and weeds in the middle of the valley? Like we got weeds that high. Nobody's been out there to cut it. Code enforcement's been out there and I commend them, but nobody's been to cut it. On Augusta Street, same way, weeds that high. That don't make sense. But if you expect him and he can't get the trash off a nice pretty street on York Street and stop throwing grass and breaking our city violations, what else, what else does he have to do to show you, show me or you that he don't know what he's doing and he don't care? So that's why I came up here tonight, to voice my opinion. Whether y'all take it or not, like I say, I watched him and that's just about how it is. But I'm not saying I'm the best grass cutter, but when I do get through, trust me, it's nice. And you can, Mr. Stewart here, he seen my properties, every one of my properties I have. They are maintained and maintained well. I'm just not talking. Because I don't like trash in my yard. I walk a block to get the trash. I clean a storm drain by my house. I clean it. The city don't clean it, I clean it. Because I don't want them leaves and everything in that storm drain blocking that water. So just take that into consideration, council. You can vote the way you want, but I have told you. And like I say, he showed me and he approved to me his work. And I don't think, to be honest with you, I don't think, I've never seen him with the equipment it takes to do like brush hogging or stuff like that. Because that's what it's gonna take on some of this stuff. And he's got it hid somewhere. So like I said, thank you for your time and I'm gonna take my seat and I wish y'all make the right decision.
Thank you, Mr. Van.
Mayor, that's a good question.
Yes, ma'am.
Was this the only bid that we received?
No, we received four bids.
So the $8.08 seems pretty reasonable. The $2, were the other bids close to that? Because that seemed really low.
The other bids were higher, but that bid was made after we talked to the contract, the owner, was a reasonable cost that he could expect to incur and still meet his goals.
So a six-
Go ahead.
A quick math, a 16-foot trailer, four foot sides, will hold like 16 yards, I think? And so it's $32 and it's $132 to dump that trailer? I don't know that, I don't know what he's doing. I mean, maybe he could, you could ask him or something, but that seems like he's going in a hole a hundred bucks every time he goes to the dump, or he's not going to the dump. But I don't know. I mean, is that, I didn't even check my math on that because I'm not really sure. But it just seems really cheap.
What I do know is that when we asked him about it, he said that $2 would cover the cost of cubic yard per dumping at the waste management facility for him as a contractor.
Here's my problem. I don't see any sense in hiring anybody that's gonna do a halfway job. And especially somebody who doesn't care enough to pick up trash on a yard before they start mowing it and move on down the road. I don't know if there's a way to get folks to talk about some of these guys that we're looking at, give them recommendations or not. But I think we might go back here and pause and we can talk tomorrow or the next day about this. I think we ought to really consider not hiring somebody that's not gonna do a good job. Now, if I had to bet my life, I'd bet my life that all this information that Mr. Van has shared with us tonight, you knew nothing about. I just would bet that. The reason I bet that is because if things were as bad as he's saying they are, that would have given you pause. So let's take that pause tonight and go back and look at some of these other bids. I'd be happy to go in there with you. Mr. Abel will talk to you and look at these and see if you can't come back to council and report maybe a different idea. We can't be taking the cheapest bid on everything. It just, it doesn't work out. That's crazy stupid.
How long has he been doing it?
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Mr. Van did state that me and he, he and I don't agree on this item. So Avery signed company, let me first of all say that the owner is not the person that's out there cutting the yard. And I don't think that we're doing justice by ripping this man's business up and down like this as a city council. He hires a group of staff. If you call him and let him know there's a problem, he fixes the problem. These were young people that Ivory Van saw there one day and they may have made some mistakes. But that doesn't give us a reason to get here, get up here tonight and just throw them out of the, throw them out the game. The King Center, I'm not disappointed with anything that this contractor has done for us. My past contractors, if it rained too many times, we would have to wait and the grass would be embarrassing sometimes with the guests. Avery Lawn Service has been there for the King Center. So I'm not gonna sit here and use the King Center as a spot that he's just done a horrible job. I'm not disappointed in the man's work.
Well then, let's do this. I didn't know that there was a man behind the man. Before we approve this, could you have a conversation with him and share some of the stories that you heard at a council meeting? And if there are problems with a particular man or some jobs that we've inspected that don't look like they were done properly, ask him what he would do about it, what action he's gonna take? And then if his answers satisfy you, we can move forward. And if his answers don't satisfy you, then maybe we take a pause.
Mayor, may I recommend that you just make a motion to table this item for the next meeting?
Yeah. I've got a good idea. Why don't we just table this? November 25th.
Can I say this about tabling this item?
Yes, sir.
So we're talking about 60 properties that need to be cut and we're gonna put them on hold for another month.
This is the slow time of year.
I believe that the grass is probably so high that they need to be cut tomorrow.
I think Mr. Van just spoke about grass that was this tall. So we do need to do something because, I mean, do you think that they would take a critique? And again, if you speak to the owner of the company, because we do need to move forward, 60 properties, the weather is about to get bad. What's the timeframe on the fines and all these things and all of the other components that go into a wait? So is there any way that we could get some kind of confirmation from the owner and move forward? How could we amend this to say that or something similar so that the work can continue before our November meeting?
Well, first off, is the contract void? Do we have a contract with him still or no?
No, this would be a new contract with a new contractor for just these limited 60 properties.
Okay, but he was our last contractor?
No.
Okay, he wasn't our last contractor.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But this contractor does do work for the city currently.
Okay. Then, then I don't see any reason why we can't have that discussion, to tell him to go ahead and get started, and then we'll sign a contract, or not, after the next city council meeting.
Why would he work if, I wouldn't, I wouldn't work without a contract.
Before he mows?
Yeah. I wouldn't work without a contract.
I believe procedure is to sign a contract, and then they can commence work.
Okay. So a two-week contract?
We can do it for a time period.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's table this, and you guys work out this stuff. And let's do something where it gets him started mowing immediately.
So we can't table it if we're going to get started, because we need to approve the bid, so that he can go ahead and get the contract to get started. I think what needs to happen is, this business owner, I'm sure if he watches this tonight, will make sure that his staff does what they need to do, even if our staff needs to go back and critique the work for this sixty, and then say contingent upon these sixty, whether we will do business with this company again. But the work has to go on, we need to move on this item tonight, so that the contract can be signed. And then, if this is his last contract, he will understand that as a business owner, not as his staff. Because I understand you saying what his staff is doing, I understand that. But, at the same time, we've got to move forward. So...
Is he doing other properties right now for us?
Most definitely, most definitely.
Have we had a problem with him?
No.
I mean, have we had a problem?
Not that we're aware of. And as part of our check, just...
We can always, if we vote on this, and we get him, and then if we see it's shoddy work, we can always go, can we go then and do something?
We got sixty properties, and I'm sure that these are properties that have been on the code enforcement lists, that neighbors have called in that need these lawns cut. And I think that we are doing ourselves an injustice. You know, Avery Van is my friend, but he is a hard man to please. Everybody ain't going to cut their grass like Avery Van. And I don't believe that we will be disappointed. And if so, next year, we know not to hire this guy back again. If there's not a motion on the floor, I would make a motion that we move forward with this...
There is a motion.
There is a motion, I'm sorry.
Well, we don't have a second, but you've made a motion to table, so we'll need to withdraw that. You can withdraw that.
I'm going to withdraw my motion.
And I'm going to make a motion that, because time is of the essence, our community, let's clean our community up. And we clean our community up by cutting. That ain't a part of the motion, but I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda items presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
No.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
No. Okay, motion. Passes, thank you. Okay, item number ten.
Consider approval to apply for, and if awarded, accept the fiscal year 2024 Oklahoma Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, or take other necessary action.
Good afternoon. This one should be a lot more simpler. So, this grant that we're applying for is the sixth year that I've applied for as director, and we've been applying for it before I was director for emergency management. It's a performance-based grant we get from the state to help our emergency management department. The funds usually go to our payroll department for the deputy director and director position. It is a benchmark-type grant where we have to meet certain objectives throughout the year, including training, going through state conferences, having scenarios, so on and so forth. Be happy to answer any questions about the grant. Like I say, we've been doing it for quite a while. But with that, I recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number eleven, please.
Consider approval of the 2025 meeting schedule for city council and public works and finance committees, as per City Code two dash twenty and Council Policy one dash two, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Coleman.
Mayor, members of the city council, we have proposed a meeting schedule similar to this, this year's meeting schedule. Ms. Tracy has the details?
It is included in your packet how the twenty-five, 2025 schedule lays out. I have had a recommendation from another council member, if you will notice in your packet. It talks about in October and November, we're going to find ourselves again like we are this year, where we just have the one meeting. So it's been proposed that while we're setting the meeting schedule, instead of waiting until those months next year and calling a special call meeting, that in October, we add an October sixth Public Works meeting to go along with our October twenty-seventh council meeting. And in November, we add a public, a Public Works meeting in November third, to go with our November twenty-fourth council meeting. And then in December, every year, we normally just have a Public Works and Finance meeting, but we will need to close out our items. So it's been proposed to move the Finance and Public Works meeting from December eighth to December first, and then hold the council meeting, the last one of the year, on December eighth. That will allow us to have regular meetings and not have to do special calls, and then everyone can plan their holiday schedule around those three months. And hopefully, we won't have another agenda with forty-nine items on it.
Amen.
We see our deputy mayor, he's paying too much attention again. I visited with Derek about this, and I said kudos for looking at things closely, deputy mayor. So, I move that we approve this item with the changes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Hang on, I got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I'm not going to badmouth this, but is there a way, when we get to about twenty agenda items, and it's like before one of these meetings, that we can be notified, we can put on an emergency meeting or something, and still having fifty agenda items in one night? Is that possible?
I think, I mean, it would be nice if we know that we're at thirty, we're at forty, we're at fifty items.
Well, the problem is, as far as just flat numbers go, some of our items that get in are very, very time-sensitive, that we have to put on that, that agenda, we cannot wait. Other ones could potentially be pushed over. Our cutoff right now is noon on Wednesdays, the week prior to. So a lot of times, we don't know even all the items that are coming in until we do agenda review that afternoon. And then it's like, how do we pick and select some of these?
I mean, like, when we have like, like, two, three weeks out, and we've got already twenty agenda items, say, hey, guys, you're going to have like fifty more agenda items. I know it hasn't happened, but maybe this time. And I know that we had some big ones when I was on, but nothing this big.
Yeah. We don't get noticed that far in advance from the departments, but it's something that we can talk about.
The danger about going that route then, and understanding what you're saying, a council person has the ability to put items on. So if we get to the point where we got twenty, you can't put yours on this.
No, I mean, just have an emergency meeting, or they get, take it to my office.
Well, they don't qualify, the problem is it wouldn't qualify for emergency.
They don't qualify for emergency. Yeah, I thought I had an idea.
Yeah. It would be nice.
Well, it is a good thought.
We could do special.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number twelve, please.
Discuss and consider the appointments of the Chief of Police of the Muskogee Police Department, the Chief of the City of Muskogee Fire Department, the Mayor, and a City Counselor, Tom Martindale, for the first two-year term for the City Counselor position, as board members of the proposed public trust upon its creation, that will manage the city-county public safety building project and operations, or take other necessary action.
Thank you. This item is to help with the legal filing with the bond company and other matters, to go ahead and have how we're doing this trust available right now, so they know how to write it all up. It is a bond, it is a partnership, this trust, that is focused heavily with the police department, heavily with the fire department. The mayor, whomever the mayor is at that time, will be on it. And then, a council member for every two years is going to be rotated on it. I would, I would, I would like to amend this, saying that the Chief of Police and/or his assigns whoever he might want, yeah, and the Chief, the Fire Chief as well, can, maybe he might want to assign Assistant Fire Chief. So, they don't have to do that role every year, for year after year, they can assign somebody.
Yes, sir. So you can make a motion as written of the amendment, that it would be the Chief of Police of the Muskogee Police Department, or the Chief of the City of Muskogee Fire Department, or their designees.
Thank you. I would, I would like to make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Good stand.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Item number thirteen, please.
Discuss and consider a contribution from the City of Muskogee in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars towards an educational campaign related to the 2025 County Public Safety Building Project, or take other necessary action.
Okay. The county is making a contribution of twenty-two thousand five hundred for the informational campaign on this big project. EMS has voted to do a twenty-two thousand five hundred dollar amount towards an educational campaign. And I think, particularly since police and fires, probably half of this project, that we should do the same, and put in twenty-two thousand five hundred to match them, so that we can move forward with an educational campaign on this tax.
Do we know where this money will come from? What part of the budget it'll come out of?
Would likely come out of the special projects fund.
Or your council salary.
See, nothing from nothing is nothing.
Can't take it out of my salary.
Well, do you, do you know what the campaign will consist of? The educational campaign? Do they already have like a layout, a budget?
No. And I'm going to assume that there'll be mailers and such sent out, just talking about the project, and how it's going to benefit the community, and kind of factual stuff. It can't be a...
Vote yes.
Yeah, can't be, yeah, can't be a vote yes campaign, thank you. But it can educate everybody as to exactly what the plans are, exactly what's going on, exactly what the community's going to be getting. Again, to me, one of the biggest parts, and I've told everybody, public safety's my number one, what I think a city should do, number one. But one of the biggest deals here is that no charge for ambulance rides, because our elderly are not calling the ambulance, because they already owe them money from the last two weeks they called them. And we don't need that.
So, my next question. If all of the funds are not allocated for the campaign by the end of the campaign, do we get those portions back? How's that going to work? Like, are they going to itemize, so that they know, like, each entity is paying this, and this, and this, and then at the end of it, whatever remains?
That's a great question, and a great observation. I'm surprised I didn't think of that. Did we write in here that any funds that are unused can be sent back, and that we are, there's a reporting of items in and items out?
Yes. So we could make, we could amend this to make a motion to discuss and consider contribution, as it stated, and then say, with a request for a report and itemization, and a refund of any remaining funds, as well as pay this out of the special council fund account, so that we don't have to amend the budget.
Perfect. I'd like to make a motion.
For all that.
Yeah, thank you.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Item number fourteen, please.
Receive report on wastewater treatment plant design and general updates, and take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
So, Mayor and council, and simply because we have quite a few new council present now for this project, this is one of the largest projects the city's undertaken to rebuild the wastewater treatment plant. We're about at sixty percent so far. So what we have done is, we've invited Keith Beatty, who is our lead engineer on this project, to come and give you a review of the project. And then Avery and myself, along with Mr. Beatty, will answer any questions you might have.
Could I interrupt with one question?
Sure.
You said it's probably our largest. Would it not be our largest?
So it is our largest since I've been here.
It's a big deal.
It's an eighty-plus million dollar project that is being funded by an FAP loan through the Water Resource Board. And most council that was on went through all that financing. And, but it's ready to go. And Mr. Beatty's going to update you. He's brought a PowerPoint. And again, we'll try to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Keith Beatty with Olson Engineering will keep this brief. And so, the project overview really is, we're removing the existing plant that's there eventually, which was a nineteen, which was built in nineteen fifty's, which is the trickly filter. The staff has done a great job keeping things moving through the plant, et cetera, with all the issues that have been there over the years. However, with this one, we're going to do the influence screening structure, rehabilitated Rossuitt's pump station, rehabilitate headwork, the sequential batch reactors, which SPR, you'll hear that term, as we go through that, aerobic digesters, the de-watering building, covered solid storage, and ultraviolet disinfection. And so, basically, when we're done, state-of-the-art plant, couple of things that we're working through with staff is not only just developing this plant to where it meets all the regs, but also understanding, I've sat on the city side before as a city engineer, so understanding what it takes to maintain a plant, and working through that to keep staff low also. Again, understanding time constraints tonight, and we can answer questions. The image that you can see on the screen right now, everything from the green line, or from item three to, to the left of your screen, that's basically going to be the new plant. Everything that's blue will probably, will pretty much be removed. This is one of the original documents. We are saving a couple of buildings for storage, but also with consideration of the floodplain. And so, the original preliminary engineering report did not leave buildings, just because they were just going to remove it, it was a part of the old process. However, we've tried to figure out a way that the staff still, we're removing some storage that they have now. And so, we're going to leave those buildings in there. This is the overall site plan of what it's going to look like when we're completed. And this is everything that's on the north side of the road. The big rectangular structure in the center of the site is the SPR unit, and the activated digested, sorry, aerobic digested area. And so, one of the key things that has to happen in this is, we are removing the existing facility on the southwest corner. And we are building a brand-new admin building for those folks. Tonight, I gave Avery a report that we just received on Friday regarding asbestos on the site. And so, we'll mitigate that as part of this project. And so, the lab administration building, this is a pretty picture of what it's going to look like. Pretty simple, easy to maintain. It'll, it'll house not only the staff, but also the...
Stormwater and pretreatment.
Stormwater and pretreatment staff also. And so, kept it pretty basic. There is, let's see if we added that in there. In the center of it, it's a small conference room that can be used, and facilities for staff with a locker room, et cetera. And so, really, the last slide is just an overview of what the plant and the process. And I apologize, the white structure towards the left of the screen, that is the existing maintenance building. They didn't color it in. They didn't color it in. I couldn't get them to do it. And so, but this is kind of how the plant will lay out with all of the new structures. And then the building to the far right on the upper street, that is the existing headworks building. So again, Mike said, we're at 60% plans. This project is very quick for us. Typically, it's a two- or three-year design process. Contract was signed in January. We actually will have everything ready to go just before Christmas this year to start sending out to contractors so we can work through the ODEQ issues that they have there. Our anticipate, anticipated bid date will be April of 2025, and then them getting started with the project sometime in June.
Did one of your earlier slides show an overlay of both the proposed and the existing? Okay, this is it.
Yeah, this is, this, there is an updated one, but this kind of gives you an idea of how it sits in there. We've, we've shrank the center green portion a little bit, but yes, this is kind of how it overlay.
And that's good. So these exist, these, maybe not the other blue structures, but these existing structures, are they all going to be removed?
They'll be removed. We're working through, of course, we've got a budget to hit, so we're making sure how, how much of those we're going to remove. We would like to remove them completely and in their entirety. Staff would too. But typically, what we do is, especially on the basins, we move them down three to four feet. That way, we can cover them back up, plant some grass. There are some areas out there now, you can see some old basins. They all, they didn't remove them. They just removed them to the top of soil. So it's hard to maintain. And so with that being said, we're considering the maintenance and the level of effort that the staff has.
So a good portion of those basins are underground?
That is correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, in fact, the large green, green structure, the SPR unit, it'll be half underground, half above. It'll be stick of about eight feet. It'll be 12-foot buried. And so when you drive by, it's still a wastewater treatment plant. We can't make it really pretty, but it'll be concrete structures with a nice building. And then the buildings that are there, the facilities like the lower building and stuff, they'll all match. And then we'll actually, we're going to do a little bit of work to the current maintenance building. So when we're done, it looks like a nice plant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Move, we approve.
We don't.
Nothing to approve tonight.
We'll, we'll be back. We've got some pre-selection work that we need to do. We've pre-selected some equipment that we went through with the city attorney and also purchasing that we need to bring back to you guys.
Well, I think we should approve it too, Tom.
Is this going to be built up higher than the previous one, like?
So it's out of the floodplain, and so if you, if, if you're familiar with the site, we're building everything on the west side, and the, as you move to the east, you know, it drops down the hill, and so everything's going to be back up on the hill.
Okay. Most everything in that photograph there that's blue is what went underwater in the 19 flood, by the way. That's all the floodplain. On the left side, the green side is up above it. It's got a drastic draw.
We took an overlay of what the 2019 flood affected when they did their initial site plan to keep it all away from that high water mark.
I don't doubt that you've done your due diligence. I just wanted to verbalize that.
Thank you. There, there'll be another phase in the future that we've talked about, and it may fall within the flood, flood zone area. However, it'll be tanks, and so there won't be any issues with maintenance or...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number 15, please.
Receive a report on lead service line inventory notification requirements and take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, I have Michael Taylor from Olson Engineering. I told you, Michael, I'd met, here to help me out if there's any technical questions. But EPA had actually mandated ODEQ to get an inventory of the lead lines in the communities around the states. This is not just Oklahoma or Muskogee that's being affected. This is all across the nation. They want to know where the lead lines are. So we were tasked to come up with an inventory of the lead lines. To do that, we used staff. We got Michael Taylor hired from Cowan Engineering to assist us by looking at some of our dates that areas in town were built. We used historical information, just used the history of what the guys knew, where these lead lines were. We come up with about 3,700 places that we think may have led service lines to them. And Avery, I don't know, did we have a PowerPoint that showed that?
No.
So the water main is usually out in the street or it's right there by, by the curb in the right of where it's through the alley. And through the, from that water main, we'll have a service line that'll go to the water meter. That's the city's responsibility to the meter. Then from the meter to the house, that's the homeowner, the resident's responsibility, not the city's. So we were trying to identify all these services that go from our mains to the water meters. And again, we came up with about 3,700 of them. We had to submit that report mid-October, which we did, and we did it on time. Now, what we're waiting on is that they, after you submitted that report, within 30 days, you have to send out notices to the people that were identified that might have these lead lines, that they have lead lines. And then what we think is going to happen, there's going to be further instruction or directives from ODEQ to follow. They will mandate what we need to do on the next steps, and hopefully, we're going to see some grants that come along with these to help do any funding, and that will be from the main to the meter, which will be the city's responsibility. In the meantime, we have replaced and will continue to keep replacing lead lines when we discover them from the main to the meter. Michael, I don't know, do you have anything to add?
Oh, that's perfect. If there's any questions.
Yeah, so one of the things that we wanted to make sure that council knew, and the reason this is on the agenda tonight, is we do have to submit that letter, and there's a sample letter in your packet that we put in there, and that sample letter was drafted by ODEQ. So we're going to tweak that along with assistance from Katrina at her office and make sure that we capture everything that's supposed to go in the letter. If you look at it, what's italicized must be in the letter. The rest of it is just a sample. So we're going to draft a letter. We'll have it ready to go. We've got to have it out in 30 days, so we've got to have it out sometime mid-month.
Are these lines generally 15 to 20 feet long at the longest?
So they're all different lengths. We have some where the meters are several hundred feet away from the mains.
What would an average be?
Your 1012.
Okay. Now, you know, you've heard about up in Michigan, I think, or, or maybe Chicago, Illinois. Somewhere up north, they had a lot of lead problems, terrible lead problems. But that was with lines literally coming from the lake all the way to the city. It wasn't little service lines. And, and I don't want to make light of anything, but these service lines don't carry near the danger that some of these communities up north were, were affected by.
So we don't feel like we have a serious issue here. We've got an issue we have to deal with, and that's what we're trying to do. And again, we're going to replace these as we find them.
Do you have an estimate on how many milliliter feet we're dealing with?
No. Lot.
Take your 35 times 10 feet, 3,500 times 10 feet.
So of that 3,700 that we believe may have lead lines or lines of unknown material, like Mike said, for, over the last 15 years, we've been taking these lines out of services we find them. So that 3,700 is based off an area where the homes were built in a certain year that may have led in the line. So it could be 3,700, but it's likely less than that. That's a safe estimate, so we're complying with that.
I see.
Well, and you know, I'm all about getting new water lines in our city and new server lines, so this is really, in my deal, it's a good thing for my agenda items and my, my standard, I get new water lines. I'm just glad we're pushing forward here. I appreciate your blessing.
So we wanted to make sure you had that information in case you get phone calls after these letters start going out.
Thank you.
I, I do have a question in case we get phone calls. We're saying that we're responsible for this portion of the water line, they're responsible for this portion of the water line, so when it comes to testing, because you're saying you should get your water tested, have your water tested, contact us, contact this person, ultimately, you get a certified laboratory, whatever. How do you distinguish to a citizen their part of the line from your part of the line? Are you going to test your part of the line and they test their part of the line? Because those are the kind of conversations that we have, that I've been having with people in Ward 3 about their water and their water lines, so...
So Ms. Cranford, my best answer to you is just make sure Avery or I are notified, and we will immediately go out and meet with the, the resident and try to determine that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
And if need be, we will incorporate our engineers.
Thank you.
We still don't have really clear guidance on what we're going to do from the EPA at this time.
Okay.
So it's hard for us to answer that question, too.
Okay. It's been a difficult question to answer. Thank you for your efforts.
Okay, thank you for the report. No action needed. Item number 16.
Consider approval of awarding the lowest and best bidder, Tonto Construction Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $81,294.40 for sludge removal from water treatment plant lagoon number one to take to ODEQ-approved land site, including disposal, equipment, and labor, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, we try and clean one of these sludge ponds out at the water plant a year. They're actually numbered lagoon one, two, and three. And this year, we did budget for cleaning lagoon one. In the 19 flood, two and three were actually flooded and removed, and we had to rebuild those. So we're cleaning one this year. Tonto Construction, Danny Leatherman's company, has cleaned these lagoons over and over, year after year. We did get six bids to clean these lagoons out, and what we're cleaning out is a product that's, is called residual. It's a sludge-type product. When they wash the filters out at the water plant, that water can't go right straight back into the river, so it goes out into the lagoons, and the heavy items in it settle, and that's the residual. And then we periodically have to clean that residual out. So Mr. Leatherman's bid of $13.64 is the lowest. Again, he's done this work over and over, so he knows what he's doing. We anticipate there to be almost 6,000 cubic yards in there, so we anticipate it to be right at $81,294.40. This product is going to have to be removed and taken to the city's owned landfill, which is out on Hancock Street, which is part of the reason why the cost is so high. It's a long travel to get the residual material over to the landfill. And by the way, that's a permitted ODEQ site for this product to be applied upon. We do recommend approval, and we'll answer any questions.
Move, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Item number 18, please.
Seventeen.
That's seven, I'm sorry, 17, please.
Consider approval for the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Cowan Group Engineering in the amount of $82,000 for engineering services at the water treatment plant or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, I'm going to actually get Mr. Rigley to assist me on this one. He's been working on this project quite a bit. This is going to be funded, just so you know, out of the ARPA funding, which is $2 million from the ARPA and $2 million matched from the foundation for a $4 million total. So this 82,000 will come from that. Out of that $4 million, we're also doing a high school pump station, water line assessment, which is on your agenda tonight, which we'll speak of later, and then some new plant work or new pump work at the plant. And I'm going to get, let Mr. Rigley help us out. He's been working on this.
Yes, so this agenda item is for engineering services in the amount of 82,000, and that is for kind of a blanket engineering at the water treatment plant. But what we're really focusing on with this engineering agreement is the engineering, electrical design, and procurement of a variable frequency drive for a pump that we already have in our possession, and then a second variable frequency drive or VFD for a pump that we are going to be getting, which is in this engineering as well. So the water plant is in the process of changing our pumping network from two large pumps and four small pumps to four large pumps. So that's going to be more efficient on electric, on electricity, on shelf parts, and it's just a better way to get water to town. And it keeps redundancy with ODEQ, which is a big thing that they want. One of the things about the VFDs, it controls how much output that your pump is putting out at that time. So by having VFDs, we don't have to control our flow with valves, and it saves the pump. It saves on electric costs, and it elongates the life of the pump. So with that being said, this contract is with Cowan Group. Michael Taylor's here to answer any questions, as well as me and Mike, so we'll open the floor for those questions.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 18, please.
Consider approval of deduct change order number three in the amount of negative $6,399.50 and final payment to Cook Consulting LLC in the amount of $399,529.32 for the wastewater treatment plant digester rehabilitation, project number 2021007, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, this is one of the projects that we were speaking of, Mayor and Council, that the OWRB money was paying for. This is a project that Cook Construction has been working on, and Justin Cook is here if there's any questions in particular to the project. This is a deduct in the amount of $6,399.50, which is always good. It does have a time extension of 319 days. I put in your packet a letter that Justin had written to me that I'd asked for to kind of justify why we were so far behind in this project, and a lot of it has to do with the COVID of 19 and the material issue that we had trying to get some parts for this project, not to mention all the times that we're pulling him off to do emergency repairs on something else the city has. We totally feel like this is justifiable. Mr. Cook has worked diligently on this project, and we do recommend approval. And Avery has a PowerPoint slide to help you understand what the digester's responsibilities are in our current system, which is going to go away.
Yeah, so this is how an anaerobic digester works. As Keith mentioned earlier, we're moving to an aerobic. So this is anaerobic, and it basically works just like the human digestion system. Put stuff in, it digests it, gas, all's come out. And there's a cross shot of how a digester works, and we just talked about that. And here's the digesters at the plant. These are what were rehabbed, and they are going to go away with the new plant, but we have to keep the plant that we have running until we get that new plant and comply with ODEQ and, and to clean water back into the environment.
So staff does recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Well, we had a motion. Do we have a second? Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 19, please.
Consider approval of the lowest and best bid in the amount of $1,663,716.47 from Cook's Consulting LLC for the stormwater system improvements, Sifatan Drainage Country Club Road Culvert, project number 2024011, as recommended by Holloway Updike and Bellon Incorporated, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, this is another project that is funded out of that OWRB loan. We're making a lot of, of ground out of that loan. This is a $1,663,716 bid from Cook Constructed Construction. Those bids range from $1,606 to $2,268. We got four bids, so we do feel like we got a good low bid, and we've worked with Mr. Cook, so we're very pleased that he's going to be on this project if you approve it. This improves the street out there. Right now, it's got some small metal pipe that goes under it, and it's gonna replace it with three ten-by-five boxes. And so a huge drainage volume improvement. And as Council is probably aware, this is one of the areas where we've had to have the most rescues for flooding vehicles in the community. So we're very pleased to see this. This will be raising the road up, improving the drainage under it, and it'll reshape the ditch. So this is a picture. The blue lines actually show you that's the many storages there that former Mayor Coburn owned. But the blue lines are where the streams are coming into the red box there, which is gonna be the new box. And then the blue line going to the right is the discharge channel. And the area of road improvement is the yellow box. So Avery put this slide together that shows you what the Sivatan Drainage Basin actually is. That yellow circle there, the big yellow circle is the drainage basin. And if you'll follow the blue streams, you can see where it discharges all the way to the Arkansas River. This is going to be, again, funded by Clean Water State Revolving Fund for one million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight sixty-three, oh, four. And we're gonna pay the rest of it out of stormwater funds, which is three hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight fifty-three. And by the way, that's currently at OWRB for review. They've gotta make sure that the part that the Clean Water State Revolving Fund is paying for is appropriate to the funding that they appropriate. If they don't fund all that amount, then we'll just take the rest of it out of stormwater, which has got plenty of funding in it. So we do have the funding. The project price is really good. We're very pleased with our contractor. The contractor's actually here, and so is our engineer, so if there's any technical questions, they can assist. We do recommend approval, and this is a project we've been waiting on for a while.
A long while.
Yeah, this is gonna be a huge improvement. Right now, currently, it's just like a dam.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, motion passes. Item number twenty, please.
Consider approval of the lowest and best bid for the storm sewer repair contract to Utilicore in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, in this year's budget, Avery and I were talking, and we were trying to figure out how we're gonna get some more work done on our storm sewer system, and how we can get out to repair some of these emergency sinkholes a little quicker. We do have an emergency contract in water, which has helped us catch up tremendously. Cook Construction actually does that. They help us out when we get behind in our water leaks. Or we have a major week, we can't, we don't have the equipment to deal with. In the sanitary sewer side, we have Utilicore, which is Mr. Cole Shive, who helps us on that side. And he has been tremendously helpful in that area as well, especially as shorthanded as we have become at Public Works. So we decided we would try to get an emergency contract for storm sewer so that we could respond to these just a little bit quicker. We did get three bids. Two of them from Cook and Utilicore were very competitive. There was a higher one from Tonto Construction. Because we've worked with Utilicore, and because we do appreciate the work he does, staff is recommending the approval of Utilicore. This is funded, this is budgeted, it's funded out of stormwater, which is an appropriate funding base for this type of project. So we do recommend approval, and we'll answer any questions.
Any questions, approve? We got a motion and a second?
I'm sorry, who made the?
Melody?
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, item passes. Item number twenty-one.
Consider approval to award the mill and overlay round two contract to APAC Central in the amount of one million, five hundred and thirty-seven dollar, five hundred and thirty-seven, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, I'm gonna turn this to Mr. Rigley, but before I do, I just wanna acknowledge the work that he's been doing in Public Works, especially in these road projects. He has learned a tremendous amount, and he is doing a very good job in our road repair program. He's not only learning more every day, but he's recognizing what he needs to improve on and making those advancements, and I'm very, very proud of him.
Thank you, Mike. So we have got mill and overlays done in all zones. We're still working in the southwest, which we'll talk about in another agenda item. But as we go through these, we look and see what streets were missed according to our PCIs and what we can see based off of our work orders. So we put together a mill and overlay that has a little bit of work in the northwest, northeast, and southeast, and those will all still get paid out of their respective zones. But that street list is in your packet. We feel like this is a very competitive price. We had more bidders on this mill and overlay than we've had on all of the other ones. APAC has done a significant amount of work for the city, and we are pleased with the product that they are giving us. And staff recommends approval, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we have a citizen signed up to speak on this item. Mr. Ivory Van?
Deputy Mayor, you correct. I am P, and I'm particular. And one thing I said, I might have lost this last war, I mean battle, but I won the war. Because I'm so glad that APAC's got this job, and they do definitely do, do good work. So like I said, thank you. And I look forward to going over and watching what they do and seeing what they do. So I'd say they definitely do, definitely, definitely do good work. So thank you, Council. And I know, I thought my opinion missed something up here, but I guess not, you know? But this time, hey, I won the war. And thank you again, Mr. Rigley and Mr. Stewart.
Well, one thing that I appreciate about you, good or bad, you're out there paying attention.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate that. And you always have.
Thank you, ma'am.
And you always will.
Sure will.
Thank you, Ivory. Okay, do we need a motion for this?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, motion passes. Item number twenty-two, please.
Consider approval of change order number one, amending the approved contract amount from three million, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and twenty-eight cents to a new total of three million, nine hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and fourteen cents for the Southwest Zone Mill and Overlay Project, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart?
Well, again, I'm gonna turn this to Mr. Rigley, but before I do, I do want Council to know that these items did go through our street committee and were approved, so, so you know.
So Southwest Zone Mill and Overlay is still going on. We've actually wrapped up what the initial contract was, but we left that contract open so we could get this change order in here. There was some underrun on the contract, which allowed us to add seven streets. But in the process of adding those seven streets, one of them would have had to get left halfway done if we didn't increase this by that thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety cents. So this change order will go to working on the streets in the Kendall Historic District, and as well as the far west side of town on Kershaw Drive and South Fifty-fourth Street. Those streets are in your packet as well. But this, this project is, was going to come in under budget, but we thought it wise to increase it by that thirty-nine thousand and change to get these extra streets done while we had that contract open. And like Mike said, this was approved by the street committee, and we're pleased to see it happen, and I hope you approve it.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, motion passes. Item number twenty-three, please.
Discuss and consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement for engineering services with Holloway Updike and Bellon Inc. in the amount of fifty-six thousand dollars for the engineering of lift station sixteen improvements, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, as we started the night off talking about the consent order, I stated that item twenty-three would go with that, which is what this is. This is the engineering contract to go ahead and put the rehabilitation for lift station sixteen together and help us get it out to bid so that we can meet our consent order requirements. We'll answer any questions, but this is basically to rebuild the lift station over at York and Harris Road. So when you turn that corner, it's that little blue building on the corner. Look at that, it's not blue, it's brown. I'll go paint it so it matches what I said. But anyway, that's to rehabilitate that lift station. It did bypass here just recently, and when it bypasses, it usually just fills in that ditch line over there. We always go clean up the spill, and we treat it, and we also report it every time it happens to ODEQ. But this gets that problem solved, and again, it's gonna take us a couple of years to actually get it done. Avery has put together a little slide to show you how a lift station works, if you want to explain.
Yeah, so just wanna make sure everybody knows exactly what we're working on here. Lift station is sewer flows downhill by gravity, but not everywhere is feasible to have downhill, so you gotta pump it up. So it goes down into this pump station, gravity flows in from each side, hits the bottom in the wet well, and gets pumped back up to the top and goes to the water treatment plant. And here's kind of a breakdown. You guys can look at this in your own time for convenience sake. So if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
So this is also something that will be funded out of the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. The funds are there, and by the way, the construction amount should be there as well. So we won't be bringing that to you until we're ready to bid, though. So we do recommend approval, and we'll answer any questions you might have.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, item passes. Item number twenty-four, please.
Consider approval to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a professional services agreement with Cowan Group Engineering in the amount of one million, six hundred thousand dollars for a raw waterline condition assessment, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, as you remember, we discussed when we were looking at the pump repair for the water treatment plant, we were talking about the four million dollars in ARPA funding that we had, and that how that would be split. That's two million from ARPA and two million that was matched from foundation. And the way that was broke out, five hundred thousand of it is basically going for the Haskell pump station rebuild, which is underway. And then we're working on those pumps and some other stuff at the water treatment plant, which is gonna be about one point nine million of it. But the rest of it, the one point six million, is identified to assess the raw water line that comes from Fort Gibson Dam to the water treatment plant. This line was put in in the nineteen fifties. It's a forty-eight inch reinforced concrete line, and it runs just about six point six miles to the city. And by the way, it also goes underneath the river before it gets here. Michael Taylor and Justin Cook are both here and can help explain anything that you might wanna know about the more technical side of this. But basically, we're gonna have to run some cleaning devices through the line to get the zebra muscles out of the inside of the line before we can actually run the diode through it to gauge the thickness of the pipe and do the more technical work on it. And again, I've got them here to explain that if you've got questions on it. But this is to approve an agreement with Michael Taylor and Cowan Engineering to do this project, and he in turn will hire the contractor to do the work. And this authorizes the manager to execute the agreement. And we'll answer any questions, and Michael and Justin are both here to help.
So on the pigging of the line, I understand it looks like a big barrel or something that goes through there?
So the way I have described it, and Michael or Justin, either one can help me, but it's almost like a buoy that you'd see out, you know, at the lake itself. And there's different sizes of them, and different thicknesses and hardnesses of them. And they're gonna run one through that's a little smaller first, and then they'll gradually get bigger to continue to clean the inside of that line. One of the problems that we have is that our line now, currently for the pig that was used the last time we did it, has a ninety-degree exit port, and that pig didn't understand it had to turn ninety degrees. So we need to cut that out and put a Y in it now, so the retrieval can, can be a lot easier. So that's gonna be the first step. That's gonna be the first step. And then we'll clean the line, and then Michael will actually do the assessment of the line. And then that will help us decide, you know, what we need to do going forward. This line was put in in the fifties, and we're seventy-five years later. We need to start planning on how we're gonna do our replacement for some type of redundancy on that line.
Well, in four years ago, five years ago, we were talking about it, then it issued then, and we were, we were hoping that we would have found some money to run a new one down beside it, and then like use this one as a backup or something, is what I remember. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, no, that's right.
And the last time we discussed it, that was why I was gonna bring up the ninety, 'cause if you don't do it right, you lose your pig, your pig gets stuck in there, and the water's stuck in there, and...
Then we got problems.
Yes, so...
Well, I'm pretty confident in the two gentlemen that we're working with. Both of them have helped us through some pretty tough issues in the recent years, so... Very, very confident in what we're fixing to do. And we will be pushing out more information as we get closer to this, by the way.
I'm just amazed what I can remember, not being up here for four years.
So again, these guys are here if you have any questions.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, motion passes. Item number twenty-five.
Consider approval of a matching grant request from the Roxy Theater in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars, or take other necessary action.
Fair members of City Council, this is a matching request for the children's arts program during the summer at the Roxy. We recommend approval, and we'll answer any questions, should you have any.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, item passes. Number twenty-six, please.
Discuss and provide direction to staff regarding parks maintenance and take other necessary action.
Counselor Dan Hall?
Yes, this is my agenda item. Mark, I wanna say sorry to your staff for having y'all here this late. The, the reason I put this agenda item on is we're getting a lot of texts and a lot of emails and stuff with concerned citizens, and I didn't want this to be a gripe session, and that's not what I'm wanting to put this agenda item on for. Mr. Wilkerson, can you come up here and talk to us for a second, or someone, whoever you want to do it? So this is, I put this agenda item on basically because all the crap you're getting from, they're probably posting on Facebook, and all the negative stuff. And I think sometimes you need to have a place to stand and talk about what the problems are. And if we, as a city council, are not helping you in any way, or financially, we're not, the city's not giving you the money or the people you need, I don't know if this is the place you wanna discuss that, but I think that with all the pictures of like the baseball fields with the poles being, or the awnings tore, or stuff just broken, just from use and abuse, abuse, is there anything that we can do as a staff or as a city council that we can help you make those things better so maybe the public won't keep putting those things up there?
I don't know, I'm not sure what you're asking. You mean individually, what the council members do individually for us?
Well, like as a city council, like there was grass grown in the weeds and I've got about 20 texts saying that why is these not being removed? The grass grown over the curbs into the street, why are they not weeding that edging that throughout the year? Why are the baseball fields got holes in the ground? Those things, is there, I wanted you to have the opportunity and educate us and probably to educate the public right now of how we can, why that's happening or maybe how we can help you fix those.
Well, you can help just by bringing it to our attention. I don't really monitor Facebook for the whatever people put on there.
Well, they send me emails and texts and pictures, they're out there playing baseball. The, it started kind of like just before I got on during the chili cook-off, there was several people here playing a baseball tournament from B X B and Jinx and stuff and they're like, the grass is mowed. The grass is high out here, the ball and the fields aren't very good or there's ruts in the outfield or the baseline. Is there, is there something that you're not, is there not enough money involved? How those, how can we fix those things?
Well...
And I can't talk to you directly as a...
So I think some of the photo that you might find on social media might be one patch of grass that maybe the guys missed or a contractor missed and it gives, it comes back to us to our attention and we go take care of it. I mean, there's over 300 acres of properties that we care for and so we're going to miss some things. And so trail users or other people, because we're not out there on a regular basis, so they contact us, they do a C A C, we get it, we go out and respond, we take care of it, we tell them we took care of it. The things on social media, really, I'm not going to scour social media to figure out what it is people are pointing out, but...
Well, this was from patrons that were out there that was playing in a baseball tournament that I know from our Little League football program and they play baseball also. And these, some of them are busy in here and they're like, the fields are kind of bad. And they said, we just probably won't be back until some of the stuff is fixed.
Well, you know...
And I turned it over to the city manager and I didn't know if it got to you or not.
Yes, it does. But to be honest with you, I think our sports complex and most of our parks are being, making better taken care of than they have in my tenure. I mean, and if it's not good enough, we'll keep working, trying to work harder. If you want it to be better, if budget time, give us some more money and we'll invest in some more people or some more contractors to try to do it even higher quality, but I've got my people here that take care of the fields and maintain the properties and they're very good at what they do, they're very proud of what they do, I'm proud of them. And I think we do an exceptional job. So I'll take an exception to some of those little things. You know, it was brought to our attention about a curb out at the sports complex that was on the street, not in the ballpark, but on the street. Took care of it the next day. So if it's, if it's something like that, it just got brought to our attention and we're going to take care of it, especially when it comes from the city council.
So, so one of the things that was brought to the person I'm supposed to report it to when I get those kind of complaints, that was done in May. It just got edged about, what, four weeks ago? And that's after I made that statement to another individual that works in the city and he finally took care of it. But those are just little things that I think that, you know, that people see and they kind of start griping and complaining and it builds on deals. And like I said, this is not a gotcha deal about you or your staff. I just was wanting to figure out if, like you said, when it comes budget time, we probably need to budget more money for you then. If we're short of staff, we probably need to give y'all more money. Because I'm not, I know that, this is a long time ago, they used to have probably about 40 or 50 guys that did the maintenance for the city. They were at all the parks and everything and throughout the city, the maintenance crews. I don't know how many you have now. I don't know if it's 20, 30, I don't know. I don't know how many guys you have working at the Hat Box anymore. There used to be, it seemed like a whole bunch of guys out there when I was younger and with times, budget changes and everything else, staff, getting people to work, I just was interested in that.
I believe the council gave us additional employees for Hat Box just a couple of years ago.
And are you having any problems finding those people?
Oh yeah, it's always difficult finding people. We go, we have vacancies consistently, so...
So the equipment and everything is working fine, you've got everything you need?
The managers and the council's been very generous to us at budget time with our equipment, yes. We're replacing our mowers on a regular basis.
And I know a bunch of the guys sitting in the audience and I know they did work hard. I just was trying to make sure that they had everything they needed, even with extra help and everything to get those things done, because when people come to our town, I wanted to think that our baseball park, our fields out there are the best around. I know we're not going to be able to do the turf stuff, especially since when the Go Bond is dead. Probably shouldn't have said it like that, but anyway, but we got to work with what we got. But if we can help you in any way to get that done, I would be happy to do that. And, go ahead, I'm going to get something.
Well, I will wait until you finish.
Well, and then there was a deal about the parks, I mean, the ponds at the parks, they return to brown and I know that when it gets warmer, it's harder to keep them all clear and pretty and none of, I've been going out there since I was a kid and I know that they've never been just clear. They're ponds and I think people forget that sometimes and it's just, and even though the fountains kind of help aerate them and stuff, if they're going to still be that way, they're just ponds. So...
That's correct. And what we've done is put the aerators in them and then there's failures from time to time. So the aerators go out and the ponds get bad and, you know, our summers are so hot and this pond gets so stagnant and they get, they just get mucky and we just try to do the best we can.
I told a couple people, I got a couple farm ponds I could take them out to if they didn't like those, but anyway, the, and they don't have areas yet, but the other, one other thing that was brought to my attention and the guy told me to go out to Honor Heights and I'm like, okay, I go out there all the time, I eat lunch out there. He said, is there any way that we can get grass to grow from the playground to the bathrooms? And I'm like, that's a big shaded area. And I don't know if you could aerate it, sand it and get enough, ask you to grow one of those trees. I'm sure y'all have tried it, I didn't know if that's something that you'd financially try or, I didn't know what.
Counselor Hall, we would welcome your ideas and suggestions or even your friends' ideas and suggestions, give us a call and yeah, I would love to have that grass out there. That will take quite a bit of expense. The reason why it's the way it is is a couple of things, is such a popular, the shade you mentioned, the big trees, the shade, the popularity of the park, because under those areas there, the kids keep that grass trampled down. And the geese, we have Canadian geese and they virtually eat every piece of vegetation under those trees. So I would love to fix it, we've priced it to hydro mulch and to sod the area. At some point, you got to, you got to ask yourself, is it worth it? You know, we spend $50,000 to go in there and try to grass that area in and then the kids and the geese make it go back to dirt. I mean, you, sometimes you got to weigh your, weigh your resources that way.
And I even made the comment to the people that were talking to me about it, that hey, just give us some money, we'll turf the whole thing for you. That way it'll always be green, so, but I don't, that's financially not feasible. I appreciate you being here, Mark.
So I just wanted to say, before you stepped away, as the councilwoman of Ward Three, where Hat Box is located, I got a lot of those same conversations, calls, screenshots of Facebook messages. One I can remember in particular because they were so irate, I was like, okay, I'll meet you there. And when I got there, Mr. Tisworth was working, I mean, as if he were eight people, trying to maintain and do all of the things and I just want to say, I probably didn't do it then, but commend you publicly for how you handled that because when we have visitors coming in and they're comparing us to Jinx and all these other places, while you're working, that's difficult in itself. He handled it with, I thought, respect for the person that was complaining so bad. He was doing everything that he could and they were raking all the dirt and kids playing and doing and he's like going behind, like, so it's a lot. And I think that sometimes we don't take into consideration what people are doing with what they have. And when you compare facilities to other facilities or whatever you're doing, sometimes, you know, if it's not the same facility, of course, we're talking about turf and everybody's saying, oh, this is this and this is that, well, it's apples to oranges at that moment of the turf and grass, but the courtesy of your staff and the diligently of your staff, I think, I witnessed firsthand and I was very pleased and I was proud to be the councilwoman of Ward Three and to say, thank you so much for handling this, like in real time, because the messages were like five minutes and I was there because I live right down the street and he was already covering those things. So I just want to say, thank you for what you are doing that a lot of times people don't get to see. You're welcome.
And the only thing I would request is if you could put something together that would be your dream list of a number of employees out there or your dream list of whatever you need out there and give it to us so we, during budgeting time, that we could like vote on it and get those things to you. Because there's not, and trust me, I understand being short-staffed, especially now at the high school, there used to be eight of us, now there's just three of us that do everything for the district. But I'd just like to see something that would be your dream list of everything you would need and see if we can meet some of that.
Here, we'll work on that.
Kind of, I got the same kind of calls on the ponds and stuff. Is there something that we can do, more that we can do with the ponds at Spalding and Robinson Park?
Just monitor them better, as I mentioned, the, we put equipment in there to try to do that and sometimes, most of the time that works, but in the heat of the summer, the very heat of the summer, it just can't keep up and...
And I think there's a lot of trash. That's what I got was texts about pictures of trash, a lot of trash. You'd have to go out there all day long.
It's, it's, it's the most...
Yeah.
Time-consuming part is the trash it collects up against the pond edges.
Yeah.
Honor Heights and Spalding both are that way, so it just takes...
Citizens who walk the park and are picking up trash daily out there and we thank them for everything they do to assist you guys and your staff.
We do have volunteers that go out and pick up...
Again, it's probably an area where a lot of homeless people are.
That's correct.
The same area where they were griping about.
Yes, very much so.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
And your staff for being here.
Okay, we have another person signed up to speak. Ivory Van?
This is the last time, this time we go home for me. Councilman Hall, I liked your presentation, I just had to say something about you finally got some parks. Finally, on the council, you've got some parks.
And I have a real nice one being built out by Hilldale, Ivory.
And that's great. You know, I see it's a lot of Ivory Vans up here now that I listen to the conversation right in here that's one of the things, nice and neat and in order. And I commend the Parks Department because I have been on them myself when I was on the council and Mark can tell you, Larry can tell you, I stayed on them. The only thing I seen this summer was that around the fence at Hat Box, it needed weed eating. That's about, about it. And down at Robinson Park, I guess disheartening, that all the work we put into building that park, you have people come along and tear stuff up, that's at all of the parks. And that hurts, looking at the bathrooms, how you, you know, you took them from an outhouse and you put them in the White House. And that's what we did when I was on the council. But I can say this, I'm proud of our Parks Department, Larry this summer, he done Juneteenth and we needed Larry real bad at Juneteenth. So one thing with difference between a councilman and a citizen, I don't have to, I don't have rules like y'all do now. So I can call Larry and I called Larry, he came out and he took care of Elliot's Park for Ms. Newton, because, you know, people, you know, we do miss, you know, sometimes we don't think about everything. And he got all the equipment and stuff we needed to do that. You remember that, Larry? And I want to thank him for that. So and I thanks the Parks Department for doing what they do. And let's just keep working together as a city, because we need to work together. I don't need to come up here and I'm fighting against y'all and, you know, and you're fighting against me. We all about, we're a team. We got to work together, you know, whether it's a different council or whatever up here. We all doing the betterment of our city, you know, for our citizens. So just, only thing I can say is, let's stay prayed up because we definitely need prayer in our city and we need prayer in our country, for sure. And I'm going home tonight, I'm going back to retirement and I've enjoyed my time up here tonight. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, you're doing a great job and all the council and all the new members, y'all are doing a wonderful, great job. And you all right with me, Deputy Mayor, even though I am picky.
Thank you, Mr. Van. Okay, item number 27.
Receive report on the improvements to the Muskogee Swim and Fitness Center funded by the 2019 Capital Improvements Plan, half-cent sales tax or take other necessary action.
Roger.
Mayor members of the council, as part of our 2019 C I P, we're trying to improve the reporting that we're doing regarding those projects and our P I O has put together a short video on what we've used that money for at the Swim and Fitness Center.
Nice, beautiful.
I, I work out there twice a week, 5:30 in the morning, and it is a beautiful, beautiful It's nice. There's nothing in Muskogee that can even think about competing. And the equipment, they've got some new equipment, everything's been well cared for over the years and the rehab job on the insides, it is a classy, neat place. If anyone hasn't seen it, I'd invite them to go down there, whether they work out or not, just to see the place. And we do have great staff there too as well. Anyway, that's a, that's a deal I'm very, very proud of.
We noticed they didn't put you in any photos or anything. We were blessed for it, but I was just saying.
So Mayor, as we go forward, we'll be doing more of these videos to kind of highlight for the citizens that don't see all of the things around the community, what their tax dollar investment are going to help us improve Muskogee as we go forward.
Fantastic. Okay, I guess we just received that report. Item number 28.
Consider approval of the appointment of Linda Ingram to the Muskogee County Transit Authority, filling the expired, unexpired term of Doug Walton, commencing upon appointment or take other necessary action.
Mr. Coleman?
Mayor members of the council, Ms. Ingram is a very active person in the community and has experience that kind of meshes pretty well with the transit authority. We recommend her appointment to fill Mr. Walton's unexpired term.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C B Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Item number 29.
Consider approval of the appointment of Mayor Patrick Kael to the Airport Board to serve a two-year term, filling the vacant seat of a council member, beginning November 1, 2024 and ending October 31, 2026, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Abel?
Yes, sir. I'd like to appoint Mayor Patrick Kael, he's shown a lot of interest, actually, he's been to several meetings to kind of find out what's going on at the airport. The airport, I think, is moving in a good direction and I think he would serve a good position on that. So I'd make a motion to appoint.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C B Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Motion passes. Item number 30, please.
Consider approval of the reappointment of Benito Gay to the Muskogee Housing Authority to serve a three-year term, beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2027, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Abel?
Yes, sir. Benito Gay has been on the Housing Authority Board, has done a great job and comes highly recommended, so I'd like to appoint, reappoint.
Second.
Make a motion for that, thank you.
We have a motion and a second roll call.
Tom Martindale. Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number thirty-one, please.
Consider approval of the reappointment of Cleida Mullins to the Wellness Initiative Coalition to serve a full four-year term, beginning November 1, 2024, and ending on October 31, 2028, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Abel.
Yes, sir. Like to reappoint Ms. Mullins, kind of the same thing, she's been doing a great job. I think she's a good member there and helps out a lot, so I'd like to make that reappointment.
Second.
Yeah, before you go on, I'd like to say, that's a great appointment. And she does fine, fine work, and she also happens to be my trainer. So I'm real high on her.
You got her hands full.
Well, actually, at the end of my workouts, I'm not so high on her, but she's a fine recommendation. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number thirty-two.
Consider approval of the appointment of Amanda Hayes to the Parks and Recreation Board to serve a four-year term, filling the expired term of Janet Thornton, beginning November 1, 2024, and ending October 31, 2028, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Abel.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Ms. Hayes is a new appointee, with that comes some new ideas, I think she will be a really good addition to the parks, so I'd like to make that appointment.
A second, she's a great, she'll be a great asset to that board and she loves our community.
And, that's a great board to be on.
Yes.
It's a lot of fun, it's a good board. Roll call, please. Thank you.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number thirty-three, please.
Consider approval of the appointment of Thomas Horton to the Uniform Building Code Appeals Board to serve a five-year term, filling the seat of professional builder, beginning November 1, 2024, and ending October 31, 2029, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Shirley Hilton Flannery.
He's been in the construction business a long time, and we've had kind of a hard time filling this position. I'm very thrilled to have Thomas do this.
I second that motion, he'll be a great asset.
Good. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number thirty-four.
Consider approval of the reappointment of Marcy Thompson to the Historic Preservation Commission, serving a full three-year term, beginning November 1, 2024, and ending October 31, 2027, or take other necessary action.
Yes, Marcy's been a big asset to the Historic Preservation Commission, and I want to reappoint her and make a motion that we do.
I second it.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number thirty-five.
Consider approval of the appointment of Rand Stratton to the Parks and Recreation Board, filling the unexpired term of Dr. Samuel Craig, commencing upon appointment and ending March 31, 2026, or take other necessary action.
Yes, this appointment, Ms. Stratton, I think everybody up here knows this, and I think she'll be a great asset to the Parks and Recreation Board. It's kind of an important board, and it's a lot of fun, but it's important, and it, and it, it's a great board to be on for such a great leader of our city. Anyway, I move that we appoint Rand Stratton.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number thirty-six, please.
Consider approval of the appointment of Ronnie Boswell as the Ward Two Commissioner to the Urban Renewal Authority, to serve a three-year term, filling the expired term of Eric Puckett, beginning September 1, 2024, and expiring August 31, 2027, or take other necessary action.
This is my appointment of Ronnie Boswell. I've been trying to get him to get more involved in the city stuff, and I move for approval, I mean, I swear approval for him to be on the, this board.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Item number thirty-seven.
Discuss the appointment of John Tyler Hammond as municipal judge to fill the unexpired term created by the resignation of Judge Tony Bradley Smith, beginning December 1, 2024, and ending January 31, 2026, unless sooner removed for cause pursuant to Section 34-89 of the Muskogee City Code of Ordinances, or take other necessary action.
Yes, this is my item. Ms. Bone Hammer.
Yes, sir.
We're not appointing these judges this evening.
That's correct. Our ordinances state that the mayor will nominate people to fill these positions, counsel at a regularly scheduled meeting, which is tonight, and then council will think about this until the next regularly scheduled meeting. And then at the next regularly scheduled meeting, we will vote on it. We will also have an executive session on him to discuss salary.
Okay, fantastic. So, if there's any discussion, discussion about the appointment of John Tyler Hammond as municipal judge, I welcome any thought now, and otherwise we'll move on, move on to the next item.
Did we ever get a response to his involvement in other cities and so forth?
Yes, we did. And I have received from Mr. Hammond a letter from the District Attorney's Office, signed by Larry Edwards, that they will take over all matters having to do with the jail, jail costs, that type of thing. And then a letter from the county that Mr. Hammond will no longer serve in any way, shape or form in opposition to the city. He'll be removed from all those items.
He's gonna recuse himself, but he's still gonna work for them and us?
He's going to work for them and us, which is not prohibited, as long as he recuses from all items related to city business.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to item number thirty-eight, please.
Discuss the appointment of Chad Locke as juvenile slash first alternate municipal judge to fill an unexpired term created by the resignation of Judge Tony Bradley Smith, beginning December 1, 2024, and ending January 31, 2026, unless sooner removed for cause pursuant to Section 34-89 of the Muskogee City Code of Ordinances, or take other necessary action.
Yes, I think Mr. Locke will do a fine job working with the juveniles. Also, this is one of those items that we can discuss now, and then we will vote on for next, next time we meet, and we'll also have an executive session in which we'll further talk about these, these judge appointments. Any other discussion about the appointment of Mr. Locke? Okay, item number thirty-nine, please.
Discuss the appointment of Justin Stout as second alternate municipal and juvenile judge to fill an unexpired term created by the vacancy of that position, beginning December 1, 2024, and ending January 31, 2026, unless sooner removed for cause pursuant to Section 34-89 of the Muskogee City Code of Ordinances, or take other necessary action.
Okay, this is our second alternate proposition. Anybody have any comments on the appointment of Justin Stout? Okay, we'll be talking about him further at our next meeting. Item number forty, please.
Consider approval for the Muskogee Police Department to purchase eighteen special operations team radio headsets from ABM Supply Incorporated in the amount of $30,669 under the TIPS Cooperative Purchasing Contract, or take other necessary action.
Chief D.
Mayor and council, this is an item, or items, that we've been looking to replace for some time. Finally got budgeted to be able to replace them.
Any questions for the chief?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number forty-one, please.
Consider approval for the Muskogee Police Department to apply for, and if approved, accept two K-9 ballistic vests from the Brady's K-9 Fund in the amount of $1,570, or take other necessary action.
Chief D.
Yes, this is a bulletproof vest for our two newest K-9 officers that we believe will receive a grant for.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment.
Yes.
Is there any way you could come to my class and speak to our kids about the K-9s? Because we are in the middle of Red Ribbon Week, and we were talking about the Hiki and how he was, you know, killed and all that stuff. And they didn't realize that the K-9s were actually police officers that wear vests, and I'm like, you can't shoot a, a dog, you know, you try just like you would a police officer. So they didn't know that. So I think this was very much needed, and if you could, I think, educate, I said my school because we were talking about it, but the community at large, and how those things work, because I don't think they take into consideration some of the equipment that you need.
Yeah, if you'll give me a call, the office, our guys, whether it be our street K-9s or our tracker, love coming out and speaking to any, any groups, so they, I'm sure they would enjoy that, and we can set that up, just give me a holler.
Thank you.
You know, Counselor Hall might volunteer to act as the suspect out there.
I can't, I can't get him to come into my room. He says it looks so intense. It looks so intense, it looks so intense, I'm not looking in.
Well, that sounds like a great idea. Okay, do we have a motion? Yep.
Second.
Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Thank you, Chief. Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
CB Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, we have some citizens wishing to speak to the mayor and council tonight. They'll have three minutes, and I'll start off with Mr. Charles Crawford.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Come on up, just state your name, no address, and you have three minutes.
Charles Crawford. I do have some items to pass out.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Crawford.
Yes, Mr. Crawford is my name. I received, along with a small number of citizens and possibly some council members, a letter from Mr. Jody King dated October 25th, 2024, on Muskogee Planning Department letterhead. I imagine that most of the citizens of Muskogee and most of you have not seen this letter before, and this is of great concern concerning certificates of appropriateness, city planning department, knowledge of historical districts and historical properties. Mainly concerning is Mr. King's answer to, does the city know when a property is historic? Answer, the city has an incomplete database of historic structures and we're working hard to complete the database. I expect, expect this to take two to three months to verify incomplete. Are certificates of appropriateness required for roof repair? Everyone can read that, I don't have enough time to sit there and actually sit there and quote everything. Is there an accurate historical property list and who keeps these records? The city has an incomplete database of historic structures and we're working to complete that database. I expect this to take two to three months to verify incomplete. So as the owner of four historic buildings and properties in this city, what am I supposed to do during the meantime, while this two to three month period happens, while I'm spending millions of dollars and thousands upon thousands of man-hours, and so are my peers, to try to work on properties that, according to item number six, will work completed have to be removed? Yes. If work is completed outside the standards of the Department of Interior, work required by a COA may be removed and replaced to meet the standard. How are we supposed to continue construction on historical properties when the city does not know when a property is historic? Further, is city planning understaffed? Do they need more people? Do we need more code enforcement officers? The answer is consistently yes. How do we get more code enforcement officers? How do we keep them? How do we keep good people on staff? There's been such a high turnover in city planning, permitting, and so on and so forth. How do we stop that? How do we retain good people? How do we keep fully staffed? And that, I'll use my last six seconds to say, how are we gonna do that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Any general comments? No questions, no discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Greg Webb, is he available? Seen here tonight, okay. At this time, we're gonna consider an executive session to discuss and take possible actions on the following.
A, pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to an economic development project, including a proposal to, to entice a business to locate in the southwestern quadrant of the city, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B, pursuant to Section 307(b)(2) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number 95, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C, pursuant to Section 307(b)(2) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 57, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. D, pursuant to Section 307(b)(2) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Workers, Local Number 2465, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. E, pursuant to Section 307(b)(4) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an
consider convening an executive session to discuss potential litigation related to breach of a city commercial water contract, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. F, pursuant to Section 307(b)(4) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss potential litigation related to a breach of a city commercial water contract, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. G, pursuant to Section 307(b)(4) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss potential litigation, claim, or action related to the collection of delinquent hotel motel tax, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. H, pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss matters pertaining to economic development within the Port of Muskogee and the southwest quadrant of the city of Muskogee, including the possibility of developing a proposal to entice a business to remain in the city, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.